And both knees are done. Yeah, I don't know, you can walk right away, so it ain't real. I don't feel it's too bad. I mean, this one could go worse, I guess. This was the better of the two, so I'm assuming this one would be okay.
Um, Mike's gonna be just a few minutes late. Call and meeting in order at six thirty P M. Okay, and then looking over the agenda, were there any additions or changes to be made? Nope. Looking for a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. And review the meetings from last week, or last month? Any changes that need to be made?
Not that I saw.
Alright, look for a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then on to business.
Alright, um, Park Commission and Council, I actually, I'm gonna have the meeting start with, I don't know if everybody's met each other. Um, so I, I think it'd be best to start the meeting kinda going around, so we do have the Park Commission. This is the Park Commission meeting, um, that we invited the City Council to, uh, so we'll start with Nikki.
Visuals.
Yeah, no speeches.
Or that you're a City Council.
Hi, I'm Larry Millender, this is my first term as a City Councilman.
I'm Ryan Cuskey, I just started this, uh, summer as Com- Commissioner.
Uh, Melissa Gomes, and I've been, I think, just over two years now.
Eric Vogel, and I think I've been here a year.
I'm on both, so I hope everybody knows me.
And I'm Mike Dodge, I'm in my eighth year as Mayor, and I was four years on City Council prior.
And I'm Maggie McKellum, I'm the City Administrator, and we also have Kyle Coons, uh, Public Works. Oh, wait one, one second.
Alright, we just went around, Mike, uh, and just said who we were, so you can introduce yourself quick.
I am Mike Wagner, uh, Chair of the Park Board. I don't even know how many years I've been sitting here, as far as Chair, but quite a few. Yeah, so.
Alright, so, um, I'll do a quick kind of review of what we're discussing tonight. So, the Park Commission, um, has been working on a park pavilion concept for Old Schoolhouse Park. Uh, and they wanted to invite the City Council, uh, to their meeting to go over and kinda discuss the future of this project. Um, this isn't a new project, uh, back in two thousand seventeen and before that, um, there was a lot of work that went into this pavilion design. Um, and in two thousand eighteen, it actually, the design that we're looking at tonight, with some minor changes. Um, the pavilion was put out for bid in two thousand eighteen. So, at that time, um, we worked with Olson Architects and we're still working with them if we move forward with this project. Um, put it out for bid, and we got three bids on the project, and it came in at three hundred twenty-nine thousand, uh, between three hundred twenty-nine thousand and four hundred fourteen. Um, at that time, the Park Commission, uh, decided not to move ahead with the project because it was over the budget that they had established. Uh, and so there, it was decided to put it on hold. Uh, but it's always been kind of a long-term goal for the Park Commission, to kinda get this project up and going again and, and put it out for bid. So, uh, it, it, between the time it was bid out and now, there has been discussion on it. Um, and then COVID happened and, and things just, um, something just kinda got put aside. Um, but we, and we started working on some other projects instead. Um, but it's always been part of the long-term goal. And so in two thousand twenty-one, the Park Board, uh, started talking about it again. And in July, there was the main discussion on how we wanted to do the pavilion. Do we want it to be, do we wanna keep it that co- kind of that draft concept, or that concept that we had bid out before? Um, do we want to do something simpler? Um, just kind of a review of what our options were. Do we wanna reuse the, the building that's currently there, which, um, we found out, and I know this, it's gone back to, um, we just kinda re-talked about how it wasn't feasible. Because we weren't able to bring it to code, and it just wouldn't, it would just cost a lot to, um, and the building itself would need a lot of work to it anyways. Um, so the Park Commission did decide to keep the current design, um, and, and make some minor adjustments to it. In August, the Park Commission, uh, looked at that, uh, at the shelter design a little bit more and offered some changes to the architect. And we'll review those at, at tonight's meeting. It's not, uh, there's not a lot of difference, but, um, if you look in your packet, there's just, uh, one of the biggest differences is that the older concept in two thousand eighteen included two large bathrooms. That was changed now to kind of a kitchen area with a roll-up window, so people can do, the, the idea is so that people can rent it out and do like potlucks. Um, in the one section next to where the tables are. And then it, they, we divided the one ba- other bathroom into three separate, uh, bathrooms that are, uh, then people are able to kinda go in and change, um, if they need to, or they have more space, or if they have kids, they're able to kinda go in there and, and help their kids out. So it just provides more privacy, more space, uh, for families. And again, that kitchen area was the other big change, um, as well. Uh, and the Park Commission did talk about, uh, kinda some costs, cost savings, um, you know, different materials, and we'll go over that in a little bit. Do we wanna reduce the size of the shelter, stuff like that? Which we decided that we would not reduce the, the square footage of it. Um, we would keep it where the old shelter was currently, or was designed at. So, um, again, there was a lot, uh, every meeting, there was a little bit more discussion. Um, and the last meeting was in November, and that is where we discussed, again, finalizing some of the details. The orientation, just narrowing down the orientation of how the building would, would, uh, face, so it would be a north-to-south building. So, um, the picnic part would be to the south. I, I did a really poor job of, of putting a map in here. Um, but essentially, the, the bathrooms would be to the north. The shelter pavilion part would be to the, to the, kinda tor- facing towards the south. And then, what else? So, um, yeah, I think tonight's meeting again is to show this idea to the Council, where we're think, the Park Commission's currently out with the project. Get the Council's thoughts, answer any questions. Uh, as far as the financial piece, the Park Commission has been doing projects here and there, but being very conscientious of their, of their budget. Uh, and so, uh, they haven't really, they've been saving a lot, uh, or we've been saving a lot up in the capital fund, and so it's currently around a little over five hundred thousand. Um, and so they're hoping that if this project does move forward, the hope was always to pay for it with cash. Uh, and then, speaking with the, the architect and kind of where things are at, um, as you know, prices keep fluctuating, supply chain issues. He felt that based on other projects that he's been bidding, that it would probably come in, he thought, around four hundred twenty and four hundred fifty. So, with that, um, if, if the project did move forward with bidding, uh, you, we could do it with the base design with alternatives. So you could do our, again, our base design, bid that out, what it would cost, but if we wanted to see, we want this design with a different, uh, like a different siding, or a different building material, we could see what the alternative cost for that would be at the same time. And then, if the bid, when the bids come in, then the Park Commission can discuss, depending on what the prices are, differences, how they wanna move forward, if that makes sense. Um, so, that's kinda where we're at. I wanna give the Park Commission an opportunity to say anything I missed, the Council to ask any questions. And then, um, I also do have Kyle here with Public Works to answer any questions as well. Um, the site does have water access, but it does not have sewer. So that's one thing that would be part of this project as well, so, um. I believe that that was part of the original bid, so yes.
It was part of the original bid.
Yep.
I think snubbing out for the, for the splash pad was also part of that, right?
No.
No, that was not at all.
That was, um, this, this design was built, or designed before that, the idea of a splash pad.
I think we had talked about doing it at the same time.
Oh, yeah, it would be, yeah, if those projects are kind of envisioned together, yes, like, the idea would be to do both stubbing at the same time. So, um, Park Commission, I'll let you kind of go over anything that you want to go over, um, or wanna say.
I remember when we were talking about how on, it would be the east-facing side, to put some signage, or put a computer board, so we could have updated events on a screen that can pop up, or that say advertising, or whatever we deem to put up there.
Now, did we decide to go with it, or just?
I think we're gonna plum it up for it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, plum it up for it.
I mean, if it works into the budget and we can do it, we'll do it, but otherwise, at least get it wired up and so it's ready to go.
Just be nice for informational skate parks on and so forth, whatever.
And also, we've been holding on to the large capital reserve for some time, and we've been collecting those taxes from everyone, so it'd be nice to do something to give back to the city and the taxpayers.
And something they'll use.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be something big they can use.
To moving forward to the splash pad anyway, so.
Yep.
That's based on the bathroom requirement, right? We need bathroom facilities in order to be able to move forward with the splash pad.
Right.
I think the pav- the pavilion, we, we've talked a lot about how the pavilion space, um, in West Ridge is utilized heavily. Uh, and it seems like there's people out there in the summertime, you know, every weekend, doing birthday parties and, um, just whatever, picnics and stuff like that. And so, they think the, there's a need in the community, or at least, uh, probably is like use for another pavilion facility. And so it seems to make sense, uh, to take advantage of, you know, if you're, are you just gonna, hard to just stick some bathrooms out there, um, you know, so it, um, benefit, benefit to both, I guess.
Be great too, for the Rising Community Festival, and, you know, maybe even move the fire department in there, you know, it will have a kitchenette. Two, or Park Board could have something out of it, or lions, or.
Yeah, there's, talk with the Lions, so they could have bingo nights and pancake dinners and stuff like that. Cause if there is maybe some signage for the Lions, they would put a little money in then too.
And then with having the kitchen area, we could rent that and generate some revenue that way.
No.
Have water.
Yeah.
Water, sink, and shelving. Yeah.
And outlets, yeah.
Um, my, so I was on the Park Board, I don't know, several years ago. Um, and I was part of the planning of this as well. Where are we, where are you wanting to do a splash pad? That was one question, like where, where is your ideal location?
Would be to the north.
So, like towards, between that and the tower thing?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
That way, we preserve the ball fields that are there. Um, not only that, but it gets a little tricky with the wellhouse where it's located. Um, that's something that's kinda gotten a little tricky to figure out where to go with it. Um, so we've, we've kinda hoped and determined, um, that it would go to the north. Now, the location here, like Maggie said, is just kind of a rough draft.
Yeah.
We're envisioning it a little bit more, the backside would be the north edge of the, the shed that exists.
Right.
That would be more of the north edge of it, the bathroom edge, and then the splash pad would go out behind that.
So, we would have to get rid of that building?
Yes.
And that's something that we're looking at right now as staff.
So, back in, I don't know, we did, like four years.
We had approval on getting there.
We had approval to move the building, so I don't know whatever happens with that, it never moved forward. But we approved like up to like thirteen grand to move it, like is that money still sitting somewhere, or?
Um.
Would that be, a Park Board would have to also figure out how to include the demo or moving of that?
We're, we're getting some estimates right now on it. Um, I think what happened, again, it was before me, but we had planned to get rid of it, and then we started using it, um, for kinda some overage storage.
We were gonna move it, our goal was to move it over to Public Works.
Right.
And, but then, it just never kinda transpired, because it was a little bit more logistically challenging with, with li- like electric lines, right?
And then structurally.
And structurally, just trying to keep it together.
Take it down.
Yep. Right. Exactly, I was just wondering, like, where, where does that money come from? You know, like, because we've already approved something for it in the past, you know, like, I wanna make sure that.
It would.
Okay, I, I wouldn't expect it to, but I just wanna make sure.
It would probably go to general capital, because my rationale behind that is because we didn't spend the money. Um, there was likely an overage in the budget, or like revenue, uh, or additional money available at the end of the year. That probably, uh, got rolled into the capital fund, cause that's where excess funds go, and so I would say it would probably come out of the general capital fund.
Um, and then my only other weird question is, so, would the bathrooms be unlocked at all times? So people can utilize it at any time, twenty-four hours, and then, uh, who's responsible for cleaning them and maintaining the bathrooms? And that, um, those would be some of my questions. Or is it only accessible during an activity? Would be just some things to think about. I, I'm totally for a pavilion, I think this is what we've been saving our money for. It's been in the long-term plan for a long time, so it'd be really kinda cool to see it actually come to life. But those would be my questions, just to make sure that we have staff to clean it and monitor it, and, you know, is it only open? I don't, I don't know.
I, one thing, um, as far as staff cleaning it, yeah, that's something that I've actually talked with Kyle about this morning. Cause it did come up, and that is something we'd have to figure out. Um, I, at this time, we are talking at, at a staff level, like adding another employee. Um, we usually try and get an inter- or an intero- like a seasonal person in the summers, so it's just, we haven't had luck with it. So, and it's time that we probably start looking at a full-time, another full-time person. So, um, that would be something.
I'd probably say like no bathrooms in the winter, because you'd have to heat that building, you'd have to turn the water off to it.
I think it's heated.
Turn the water off to it?
Yeah.
Um, it's. As far as, um, locks, I think there, I, again, I don't, I would have to look at what the cost would be, but I know there are, um, even with the building, some security stuff that I'm looking at for all the buildings. I wonder, I'm just curious to look at, like, automatic unlocks.
Time locks.
Time locks.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was gonna say, I mean, even check into, like, um, uh, timer lock system.
Yeah, I.
I just worry about vandalism and people.
Absolutely, and that's.
You know, and, and the extra costs down the road, and making sure that we kinda have, there's gonna be unexpected things that we didn't think about. But I definitely think bathrooms, instead of just one porta potty, I would still suggest having that option, like we have, even if we have those bathrooms. So, if it's after seven and somebody's still out at the park, they still have a bathroom access.
Are we able to put cameras up or not?
Um, that's something that.
This building to that?
Yeah, that's something, again, like, we're working on bringing a, well, I'm working on bringing a campus-wide security kinda thing to the Council. We've talked about it in the past, um, and so that'll come back to them soon. Uh, so yes, um, and then also, yeah, I know that there's, I, I don't think we can prevent everything, but I know that there's things that you can put in place. One, specific faucets that turn off automatically, so that people don't just leave the faucets on. And I think there's, like, just automatic, some other automatic stuff that prevents kinda some of that kinda stuff. Yeah, automatic lights and stuff. Um, again, it doesn't prevent everything, so that is a good concern to bring up. You know, what if, I mean, we have people tipping porta potties every summer, so.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're gonna prevent all these things, and I'm not gonna say no, because I'm worried about vandalism. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we have, at least have an idea, so we're not building this, and then we're like, well, now someone has to clean toilets and the bathrooms.
It's gonna be more well-lit and things too, once this is in place, you know, so you're not gonna.
Oh, yeah, will it have exterior lights on the outside?
That was supposed to be, see, th- this doesn't show everything, this is just the rough draft of the design. Our previous models had, you know, outlets, and it, all the, you know, all the drafting had been done. This is just the, the basic design of how we've looked at moving things around. Um, the bathrooms are gonna be mostly stainless and, and that sort of thing, so it's, it's, they'll be, it's basically pressure washer down, right? Um, simple, easy, get in, get out, that type of thing.
And it just has floor drains, is that?
Yes, yep, yep, each room will have a floor drain.
I like it, I mean, I'm, this is really exciting to see a project like this. I mean, we've been talking about it forever, we did a big feasibility study, if we just added on to the building down below, and then we're just like, oh, that's not really in an ideal location. Especially if we were gonna do a splash pad, so. I like it, and I like doing a bidding with alternatives, kinda how we did the fire station, just, it just allows us a little bit of flexibility on the price.
That was one of my big concerns, was, was the brick, and if we had to stay with the brick, if there was some other, you know.
Well, I think.
Types of materials that we could potentially.
The previous, uh, boards or councils wanted consistency of buildings, and so it was more of a cohesive look, since we have the building down by the baseball field. Um, wanting to stay somewhat consistent is kind of the ideal. Now, I, I don't know if the Council today feels the same way, or the Park Board feels the same way. Um, but that's kind of where that came from, was a consistency, and I think also, is that, that's a lift station, right? Or a well, it's a well, I'm trying to be smart, but I think it's a well. You know, I think that's brick as well, just trying to stay consistent. And that's just me, hun- from history of being on this project.
So, if we're talking about that, so with the, uh, the longevity of the building, the structure, brick versus a type B?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, again, what we would need to consider, what are the, what are the sh- initial costs versus the long-term cost, like maintenance and everything? So, it, that's one thing you would have to consider, do you want to spend more now and get like a s- brick building with potential less maintenance over time? Or do you want something that will probably need more maintenance over the years? That, it's kind of weighing, weighing everything out.
So can they, when, if you're gonna do alternative bids, can you, can you ask the, whoever puts them together, say, hey, this is like a fifty-year-old building versus this, the way it's built, would be like a twenty-five-year-old building? I, I don't know if they can or not.
Yeah, you, I mean, they know, I, I know when we talked about it, cause we were wanting to do at least the cinder block, uh, structure. But then, just, you can just kinda throw in, like, what if it's made out of more of like a wood structure? Um, and we can just see what that cost comes in at as well, and they, they would be able to tell you, or the architect would give you an idea of what those materials last. Um, again, we would have to consider that as well when we're doing maintenance, um, because obviously wood requires more maintenance costs, and, and we would need to, I don't know what that all entails, Kyle would know more than me, but, um, so again, the alternative is just kind of getting the information, the numbers, and then deciding when the bids come in, like, okay, this may cost a lot less, but, and, you know what I mean? Like, there's a lot of weighing, it's to get information, but then also have a discussion after, as far as which, which one makes sense in the long run.
I think we kinda talked about some of the requirements of, like, over on Shimcore, how some of the buildings, if they're cinder block, they have to have so much brick.
Yeah, like a facade. Yeah, so I think right now, um, the Park Board's still, w- we still have some, we don't have our final plans yet, because we wanted to bring this to Council to even get an idea if this is a project that would move forward, one. And two, if there were any other additions, because when we start working for those final bid documents, it does start costing a little bit of money to, to make any alterations. So, just keeping that in mind, and that's why we haven't, the architect was willing to do some minor changes that were shown in here, but like if, we didn't wanna spend more money, or spend any money until we were sure and got input from the Council, so. Um, they came in at three hundred and twenty-nine, I think, and, between three twenty-nine and four.
Yep.
What was the ra- those are the range of bids?
Yeah, there were three bids, yep. And I, I remember too, at that time, when we bid it, we, I, again, you just don't know how many bids you're gonna get, it's all about timing, and that time, we only got three. Other projects we've bid, like, usually get more than that, and so it just depends, again, on timing, and obviously, the more bids you get, the more, you know, it's, it's nicer to see, like, how competitive the bidding process is.
How quickly, if, if we kinda said, oh, like, yeah, we, we think this is a good project to move forward on, would you be able to get this moving, so that you could have bids before spring? Cause I'm, I don't know if contractors already have a lot of their spring and summers already planned.
Yeah, I talked to the architect about that, and he was confident that we could get it going pretty quick, like, bid out, and he actually. And he actually felt for this project that it, cause I was like, well, don't most, I did ask, like, don't most projects get bid out in like November, December? But he, he said, I forgot entirely what he said, but I think a lot of projects were getting closed out. Or he felt that a lot of projects are closing out in November, December. He felt the spring was actually a better time to, to bid it out. So I don't think we're gonna have a lot of changes. This, this design is already pretty much complete, except just some minor tweaks that I would, yeah, just some. I think the park board would have to do one more meeting, just doing final review and then send it to the architect to do. Again, it has to come to council for, to put it out for bid, but I think we could get it going by April. Or we would have one more meeting in March and then probably, there's notice requirements and stuff for bidding, but I think we could get a bid out in April. Because it was over budget.
Cost.
It never, I don't, it never came to council.
No, we never took it that far because we were, we were looking at, we were hoping for two fifty ish. Just were, cause we had what, three something in the budget at that time, three seventy.
Would have pretty much took up the whole budget.
Yeah, and it was, it was so close to what we had in our budget at that time that it, it just didn't make sense to, I mean, we would have been using probably eighty-five to ninety percent of what we had in the budget at that time. And it was just, it was, it was too scary to bring that to council, knowing that we didn't have any of that reserve. We're still in the same boat, right? Um.
Well, I, for me, I think that there has definitely been some other projects that have come since that time with the pavilion, the parking, the half basketball court. So before, we had all these projects that we wanted to still do and this would have eaten everything up and we wouldn't have been able to do anything for a period of time. And since this stalled out, we were allowed to, it allowed more freedom for dollars to be used in, on some other projects where I feel like now would be a better time because we've kind of completed some other projects. We added the skate park, you know, we've got the half court at Fieldstone, new playground, or is full? What do I know? Full, you know, and then we've got the pavilion, so.
Right.
It's the same scenario, but I think now that the money, I, I think this is more allocated like this would be used for this project. Where before, I think there was other projects that still wanted to be done and this, and you couldn't do all of them.
And I believe that, you know, we, we have, this is a concept that, I mean, we have worked on for a lot of years. I mean, for a long time. This is something that we've, we've tried to bring to light. We've tried to come up with the best scenarios possible, the best uses possible. And, you know, to Nikki's point, we've done a lot of projects. We've, we've put a lot of other things into a lot of other parks. Old Schoolhouse has not had a lot of anything go on for quite some time, right? And I, I just believe that, right, right. And I, and I'm, I'm just thinking that now is, I mean, you know, like I said, it's a dream that we've had for a long time. And I think it's just, it, it's kind of getting to that point where, where it's kind of bringing that dream to a root.
We recognize that, you know, it, if things generally aren't going to get cheaper over time either. So, you know, this, this concept basically contains what we think we need to, what we'd like to, you know, see be get built and, you know, if it's, you know, it meets, it helps meet our, our goals, I guess.
I think one thing too is, I, I remember when we bid out the project, we, we felt at that time that they did come in, come in high. And so we thought, our, our goal was not to wait this long, I think, to bid it out again. I don't think bidding it out during a pandemic is, you know, helpful. But I think, because there's a lot of issues going on right now with supply chain. But I do think that we, again, were able to not only keep putting money into our capital account, but we were able to accomplish a lot of good projects as well throughout the last few years. And I, and I'm hopeful that, cause if you look in the packet, the, the bids actually came in over what we had saved. The architect in this case is hopeful that it'll come in in the low, hopefully the low four hundreds. And we do have a little over five hundred thousand right now, plus another five, fifty thousand coming in this year with the levy. So I, I'm, I'm hoping it won't kind of deplete everything. It's pretty consistent with our long-term capital plan too, but.
So do we have any idea of how much the splash pad is gonna cost?
That depends, so it's, it depends on, you can, you can phase it. But I would say like the initial, like basic splash pad, the one we wanna do will be about one fifty, two hundred.
Then how are we gonna pay for that?
Well, so again, the, I think we can, the park board's goal is to maybe start planning and get like more concrete numbers on it this year and also talk about financial. So that's, it, it, it's possible if we can't narrow down the details that it, it might not be a twenty twenty-three project. It could be pushed out until we can save enough to do it or get creative. So it's kind of like that, the wish list, like we wish things, we're hopeful things might go a certain way. But if everything doesn't come together the way we want it to, then like we've done with other projects, we'll just push it off a little bit further.
So there was a survey done of the residents in the mayor area a few years back about what they would like to see in different things. Is this plan prioritizing based on what the park board wants, what city council wants, what staff wants, or what our residents want?
The, I would say when we did our long-term capital plan, when we started that, it took into consideration that survey. And our priorities for the park board have always, have, haven't really changed. We've just kind of been ticking off the, you know, as we go, like the projects that were, again, on that survey. So I would say we, like every year for our capital plan, we do, we update it based on the projects we've completed and the projects that we, one, that we've talked about and considered in the past. So we put together a list based on that. We've been doing projects based off that list. And that, every year we create or update it and council does get a copy of that as well too, when we do our full capital improvement plan. So I would say, yes, we've been, we have, and we also do get residents that have commented or provided feedback to us. Either for me by email, like projects they'd like to see, or they've come in and they've stated that they'd like to see certain projects. And we've, we've tried to work some of those projects in. Some haven't happened yet, but again, it's about prioritizing and.
Yeah, so I'm just curious if we're prioritizing what the residents want.
Well, the survey results, we did not give a very high outcome of results. And the number one thing that they wanted was a pool.
A pool, that was the number one.
That was the number one. And a pool, after doing research with multiple other cities that run pools, all pools run in the red. So that was not something that we were interested in moving forward to.
Make money with the splash pad either.
No, but, but with the pool, you've got chemicals and staffing and there's a lot of other things that it makes it a negative on the bottom line.
Recycle the water and we're gonna.
Yeah, so a splash pad, yes, you're not gonna necessarily make any money on it, but it's not as cost prohibited as a pool would be, and you don't need necessarily staff.
You don't need staff. You can run it on a timer. It's not continuously run. A timer or, you know, touchpads, people can start it and stop it as they use it.
So what, what's park board's priority, splash pad versus pavilion?
Well, the pavilion, by code, you have to have a facility with bathrooms available for any type of water structure. So that's where the pavilion would, would almost be more beneficial to start with. Get that in place, get the bathrooms set up. Not necessarily the pavilion.
I understand the bathrooms, but pavilion versus splash, excuse me, splash pad?
I think after seeing, in, in my mind, after seeing the use of, of Westridge Park, which is utilized quite often for, for a lot of different things. I, I think this would, you know, the, the pavilion would benefit the city in the fact that it, it could, people would have a place to congregate, migrate to. We're offering some, some amenities as far as, you know, stainless counters, you know, other than just a grill. Right now in Westridge Park, there's just a grill.
Has anyone used it yet? I think it was used while you were foot, it was.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I, I know there's people. So.
And I understand people use it, but I think sometimes we talk a lot and a lot of people use it all the time. And I think we have different opinions on that. I think people use it. I've seen people down there. I don't, I don't know if I've seen birthday parties necessarily down there or big, but, you know, I see people sitting there using when their kids are playing. A couple of families are there and they sit there and they get up and down.
Well, there's been quite a few birthday parties.
Yeah.
I live there. It's utilized quite often.
There are, there are parties out there. It's literally my backyard.
And, yeah.
Eric should know.
And I, I personally would prefer a splash pad, but if we're already doing the restrooms, then just adding the little bit on.
Asking, does it make sense to look at just doing restrooms and a splash pad? And then maybe a shelter like we have in Westridge? Do we need, I'm concerned with the big kitchenette. I honestly, are people really gonna rent it out? Are we gonna make a lot of revenue off it for a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar building? That's my concern.
I, I don't think it's.
People, now, it's not, I understand they have these at Lake Minnetonka or, or Minnetonka or Waconia where the, but are people gonna come rent this to be in a playground?
Think of a birthday party with the splash pad, have a get together, have, have your food out and.
And then what, is it reserving? And have we thought through a lot, is it gonna be reserving, is it gonna be charging when we reserve the splash pad? I'd rather see the splash pad and some restrooms and a small shelter personally. Now, could it be, could you add on to it later in the future if it comes out? That's why I was asking what the priority is and where.
Yeah, but then you run into that, okay, how much is it gonna cost to tear this section down and add on to?
No, I understand and I get that, but we're not spending that money. We're getting something. And, and again, back to who asked about the community, what does the community, is it time to ask them again?
And, and that, that might be a good question.
Or would the residents use more, a pavilion, kind of a rental pavilion or a splash pad? That's where I struggle with. It's a lot of money for four fifty for that, plus then another two hundred thousand for a splash pad.
Did, when these discussions happened in the past, was just bathroom facilities explored?
No, it wasn't. At that time, to be honest, the splash pad concept didn't come in until after we had already started working on the concept of the pavilion. And then the splash pad idea came in. So we had already, you know, started working on the pavilion and that's something that we've, we've just honestly kept going with. It's, it's not that, you know. The sheer cost of this project is gonna be in those bathrooms. It's not gonna be in the overhang structure of the pavilion. You're gonna spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on bathrooms.
Yeah, the rest of the facility.
The plumbing, the sewer, the water. That's where all your money's gonna be going, not into the structure that's covering the few painting tables.
I think when I first started, they bid just bathrooms and I think it was developed by the ball fields.
Yes, extremely high there too. The sewer and water. It, it's the excavation and the plumbing. So to me, the, the pavilion's trivial to the, the bathroom cost.
When the first structure was, when the first, the Marshall there was bid, like twenty seventeen.
Something like that.
Yeah, twenty eighteen, yeah.
Eighteen seventeen, sewer and water was included in with that bid and I think we get by a lot cheaper. I have to include it with it. I have a contractor come to do stubbing the service lines for the, for sewer and water.
Yeah, dig it in.
Yep, really separate, so if this is a project that, you know, gets passed and everybody's on board with it, you know, just have that stubbed in, ready to go. Here's our hookups. When we bid the project, if it goes good with it, honestly, I'll put two states out there, your water, your sewer. Contractors come out, look at it, you know, they'll be like, oh, okay, boop, boop, you know, and they just bid everything off of knowing that, you know. Because before, I think, I think that kind of drove the price up a little bit. Not saying that it won't come in high because honestly.
Right, no, everything, right, right, right.
Yeah, so something to think about.
I'd say I'm opposed to that.
Right.
A lot of money.
I, I, I'm, and I definitely hear you.
And I am concerned that is it time to start getting some more, trying to get more residents input on some of these things, what they wanna see. On those, you know, and I, again, I just, I don't see myself ever coming up and renting. I would never have a family reunion up here renting. Now, I would go to somewhere like, maybe somewhere else apart where they have them separated and you kind of have your own space. Trying to rent that out and people are still in the parking lot, people are still in the playground, splash, but then all these other people are running around and stuff's going on. I wouldn't wanna do that, you know, I probably wouldn't rent something like that.
But that's you.
Right, right, yeah. Not saying others won't, but I think that's why they kind of have them separate, you know, kind of so you have your own space and they're back kind of not in the woods, but they're back off a little bit so you have your own. That's just me.
I just think of a kid's birthday, how neat, you got a park, you got a splash pad, be real convenient, you got a kitchenette, you can serve.
And what we charge.
I think it'd be pretty minimal. We, we discussed some of the, yeah, you know, charging for, for some of that and.
In my opinion, I don't, I don't think it would be my, a goal mine to that it would be actually a revenue generator, you know. The renting the facility is more, yeah, it's something just offset.
Something to offset some of the cleaning. And I guess looking forward to the future too, as far as the pavilion area and whatnot. You know, we have Lions Club, hopefully they, they can expand and grow. And hopefully, you know, and, and they're not opposed to assisting with this, although they don't have a ton of money now, right? They're still fairly new, they're still trying to get on their feet. But we, we have spoken somewhat with them and they are, you know, interested in, in doing what they can with this. I think, I think trying to, you know, build something up here on top of the hill to replace that building, just to make a focal point in this park. Just to, to give us somewhere for, for community to gather. You know, for, for, it, it's a nice overlook of the ball fields, the skating rink, you know. I, I just, I just feel that it would add a lot to the, the overall image of the park.
I'd hate to build it based on, from what I'm hearing, restrooms are mainly being driven by the splash pad and not the one, if that didn't happen. So now we built these bathrooms for nothing?
I don't think they'd be for nothing.
We do have a lot out here. We have, you know, we have the ball fields.
Yeah, and I get that.
Yeah.
And are three bathrooms sufficient for the splash pad?
We've had a shack down there that's, I think it's probably been rented once or twice.
Right. Yeah, but that, not much to be kept down there. And that was a lot of money if I remember.
I'm just concerned, I just wanna make sure we do our due diligence and make sure.
Absolutely.
And I do get concerned if we're trying to push it through this fast, you know, and someone that, oh, yeah, we can have this help by April. I, I don't know if we can get even.
Well, I mean, to be honest with you, this money has been sitting for a long time. And I know it's gonna take up a lot of the budget, but like I said before, we've done a lot in between since we put this originally out to bid. We put in a lot of money into the parks and we've been saving money for this project. I mean, that has been, I think, on every park board's thing is that this is gonna be, when is the right time? I think most of it is, yeah, the cost is in the bathrooms. And it's, you know, having the kitchen option is just a nice extra thing for people to have and utilize. And maybe it gets used more than we think it will, or maybe it doesn't get used as much as we think it will. But I know that like our yearly rising community festival would utilize it. You know, maybe there's some other things that can happen. So I would be, I would definitely be okay with, even if it came in at four hundred thousand and ate most of the budget. That's what, how I feel that that money has been sitting there, cause if you look at the future. how I feel that that money has been sitting there. Cause if you look at the future projects, yes, splash pad, but we have to have bathrooms. So that's the other big one, but all the other little things are not, um, you know, our two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, we're talking like twenty, thirty. I mean, we, we did some of those bigger projects, like the basketball court, the new playground equipment, that was a hundred thousand, I think, or eighty thousand. You know, so we've invested and the rest of it is more infrastructure like trails and.
Trails, parking lots.
And, you know, that kinda stuff where this would be like the big project that we've been saving for. And if the park board is able to pay cash for this project, that's a huge win. And, you know, right now with inflation, that money is doing us no good. You know, it's actually worth less right now than it would if we built something with it.
Is three bathrooms sustainable for the splash pad? Are we gonna build three bathrooms and then next year we go to put a splash pad up and we have to have six?
Well, the splash pad concept that we have is not that large. I mean, it's, it's relatively small. I think we're talking like. Right, right. Should know, right, cause I think we're talking like four water features kind of type thing, you know.
And the water features will be interchangeable if we, you know, to change things up down the road.
I don't know, I don't know what the code is. What, what is the code?
Yeah, I mean, I would say if you can just see if there's a code for how many bathrooms are needed for a splash pad, if it's based on size.
Yeah, I'm sure it's based off of a hundred people, fifty people type of thing.
Right, right.
Yeah, like what's the capacity?
I mean, you figure thirty people there, that's, I mean, that would be enough for three bathrooms.
We've, we've kind of, uh, no, we have not discussed that. We were kind of hoping to see what council would say about moving forward with looking at bids. Um, and, and seeing wh- how their feeling was to looking and to see what, what costs would come in at, what we, you know, before we got into actual, you know, heartbreak or not, right? So, um.
Well, what, what, what's the cost to get, to move forward now? What would the cost to finalize the plans and get it sent out? What, what would it be in order? Fifty grand?
No, I don't, I, I mean, again, this, a lot of our investment is already in the plans. I, it, I think we would just have some minor.
Cause our original set was thirty thousand. The original set of plans was thirty nine.
So I.
Started this.
I can ask the architect what bidding would be, but I don't see it being any more than, I don't think it would be any more than five grand to make alterations or. I think it, yeah, it's just the cost of just having the architect. Minor revisions between the bid doc together and doing it for us, so.
I mean, you guys have been working on this for years, prior council, prior park board.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this has not been a rushed plan by any means.
I've, I've been working on it since I.
Well, that's what I'm. Right, yeah, I mean, since you started.
Been rushed. It's been thought out. It's been, there's been a lot of thought and effort put into this. And we just wanna know if we can.
Like I say, is it a feasible?
Is, yeah, is it, is it even feasible?
You know, that's kinda where we're at. We wanna know if, if it's a.
I, I like that, we, a lot of the money has already been spent in terms of the.
Right, the other project.
The, the engineering or the architect to get it done. Um, I like that we, our, our fund balance should be enough to cover it. And I know that it's a lot of money, but I also see the future projects, like I said before, and I think that this would be a great use of money and I think a lot of people would utilize the space. Um, and if your end goal is to have a splash pad, this just brings it more to light. And maybe you have to move that out every year depending on the bids for this, but I, I would be completely in favor of moving forward with the project and asking for bids, whatever timing for, for me as a council person.
Yeah, I can get you like a, like an, a cost estimate. Again, I don't think it's gonna be as more than what I think are the five thousand, even if that. Um, and, and again, if you go up for bid and they come in again, not where we want them to be, we can just reject it, so.
I don't wanna give the impression I think this plan is our whole collection of paths. I understand we've been working on this. I'm talking about some of the, what if we did wanna get some community input now?
Right, we should.
Do we have time to do that or why haven't we done that? I mean, when we have, um, dish drives, can we set up a booth and should we have been asked, you know, in high six twenty twenty now or last summer? Or maybe this summer, can we do it?
Right, right.
And get, get some input versus, you know, here's our projects we're working on, but is it too late? I mean, can we get community input now? That's what I mean by.
But maybe this would be, maybe to your point, maybe this would be better, um, gets community, community input and give us this year to figure out. If our numbers will work.
Right.
And then put it up for bid maybe in, in early fall.
To, and get somebody input on that. What people think is their high, you know, where's their ceiling to.
Right.
If it doesn't cost that much just to get, put it out for bid, why can't we put it out for bid to see if it, this is even a project that is in our scope? With the material costs of things. I don't, I honestly, getting the community involved, I get it, but I, I think we're so far into this project and it's been a while. I don't, what, what are they gonna do? They're gonna come in and change it? Now we have to start from scratch, cause they think it's something different. I don't, like, I get it, but I would look for future, I would look at future projects of like.
What, what do you rather see? Would you rather have a splash, the splash pad or a pavilion style or things like that? Not necessarily, do you think two bathrooms, three, you like colored, I don't, I don't think you could actually.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying like, we need the bathrooms. So like, everybody's saying the cost for the little kitchen and the pavilion part is minor compared to the bathroom. So even if we just did a building with just bathrooms, it's probably three hundred and ninety thousand and then you add twenty thousand for the pavilion part and the kitchen.
Right, right, we need to know if that's.
I speculate, I, I agree. I think it's probably true. I don't know where that rate off is though. I'd love to have bathrooms out here. I'd love to have a shelter out here.
Maggie, is that something we can?
I'd love to try to get the baseball club back here, you know.
Absolutely.
Try to woo them back and, but I think there's a lot we can do and try to get more community added, more stuff at the baseball fields now that we put the batting cages in and we put the fences up and, and, but we talk a lot about those things of, well, if we do this, then we can do this. Well, I haven't seen any baseball. I've seen people playing, but not, not organized where here it is now, now we're doing it and there because of these reasons. So I'd like to see some of that, but, um, I think bathrooms are a big part of it. I think that'd be huge. I think that I wanted them for.
Mary Luther and JV playing up here yet?
Are they still playing as JV?
I think they're still using it.
There's a lot of people.
Yeah, I think they're, yeah. Yep, so I mean, you know, but.
Yeah, I know the mayor nights use their fields for practice and games, uh, for like U ten, U eleven.
I'd like to sponsor something. I'll get a varsity game down there and let's sponsor that or, well, how about the Lions when you bring them? Would they, how big of a chunk would they wanna get? What if we named it the, the Lions Pavilion? And they would go fifty fifty? I, I mean, have we, have we had those conversations?
We have.
He was here, he said they have to go back to their chapters, so their, the Lions Club itself here in town is not gonna pay for it. It's the bigger umbrella company that's gonna.
Know some of those things too. But I think I'd, I'd love to partner with them.
Yeah, and, and there is a partnership and there are grant opportunities, but when they did come and talk to us, they said it would be between two and five thousand a year is what they could probably support. So it's not a lot, cause they're so new and they haven't been able to really do their, their fundraisers.
Maybe they could just donate to then the LED sign that we'd put on the building. Or stuff in the kitchen or pick the tables.
Or the electricity.
Cleanings or, yeah.
You know, for, for those things.
Right, exactly.
So would the pavilion be available for rentals?
Yes.
Like a family for Saturday night or something? And then is there, was there a plan for additional parking or?
Yes, that will be, there will be additional parking at some point.
Down further?
Not part of this project.
No.
So it'd be paving in kinda where the gravel starts? Yeah, you'd be paving where the gravel starts?
I mean, I would say if the fees to like, put this out for bid is minimal, you know, I would look into that. And then at least gives us an idea. I mean, then might we, you have to go back to the drawing board and do something more like, how much is it just for bathrooms? And then do you just put in a pavilion like that and you skip the kitchen? You know, because who's gonna use that space? How many times a year or in the summer would that space get used? But we might not even have to have that conversation if, I mean, that's what happened with the fire station. It came in real, a lot lower than anybody really anticipated.
I think my concern, like, if, if it's a, it's, we, we, I think we need to decide whether we're going to go up for bid and make the decision based on those numbers or if we're going to be seeking community support. Because it doesn't seem, if, if we, if we go up for bid, we get the bids back, that, that package isn't gonna be, or you know, those bid options aren't gonna be viable through the summer. You know, we'll have to make a decision likely before we would be able to go out and get that community, community feedback. So it's like, we either make, make, we need to make a decision whether we're going to be seeking bid or, or seeking.
That's up to you guys. I.
Seeking feedback.
And I could agree more. Cause I don't think it's fair to even have people come bid on something thinking, well, we're just trying to feel the waters.
Right, agreed.
We're not even.
Agreed. It costs money. It costs money for them to bid that. Yeah.
We don't, we just don't wanna get a bad name out there for people.
Exactly. We won't get bids anymore, yeah.
Right.
I agree, a decision needs to be made.
Maggie, do you think the architect would tell you like what they think just three restrooms would cost?
Um.
Like if we were to cut the building like right at the mechanical room?
They base, yeah, I think he would take kind of the material cost for, and then kinda what the bids are kinda coming in at. I, yeah, he would be able to tell us an estimate.
From the hip ballpark estimate type of thing.
Yeah.
Just to see if it is worth it, just to like, you know, if it's an extra thirty to fifty grand for the pavilion.
Which if that's the number, that seems in my mind definitely viable, you know, like.
But if it's like half.
When did he give the projection of four twenty to four fifty?
I asked him about that last fall.
So I mean, that could be completely unrealistic at this point.
Yeah, I think it was, it was probably November.
Yeah.
So it's been a few months.
And everything, I mean, you could be, that could be extremely unrealistic in today's world.
Prices, materials gone down a little bit right now, so this is actually the time to get some numbers out there. What I've seen.
Yeah, I mean, that's the reality.
Have to decide if you want to go back to the, you know, community and see other things that they want with this money, but I don't know, I feel like we've just had this project for so long that it's kind of, it's kinda like the foundation of a lot of other things that we can add in the future. And without this, we can't really dream big on other parts. And this was kind of like our flagship park area to bring in things as a way. So that's kind of why I'm, I'm not against getting community feedback. Because when we had people come and pick the, um, playground equipment, um, there were, we did ask some questions and one was, they were really excited about the basketball court that we were putting in. So I do think people um, like to get involved, but also when we did the last survey, I think we got like fifty responses, if that. And most of them were like pool and things that were like unrealistic to even a small town like this. And I'm not just, I'm not trying to go against that, but this is like the foundation. I think you can do community involvement for future projects, but I don't know if this one is necessarily like, well, if we don't do bathrooms, you can't, what, what else are we gonna do in our parks? That's all I'm saying is like, I, I'm again, not against moving forward this project sooner than later, just with how things are.
I think, like, from a staff perspective, those that have reached out to me and I have related to the park commission has out, it's been a splash pad. Um, like getting something like that in town eventually, uh, just like, again, a community. I don't know. A lot of people have young kids and they go, they just say they go, they have, they like splash pads, especially on hot days. They tend to go to like Cologne or Delano. Um. But, and, and so that's, that's been kind of the main one. Otherwise there has been, again, an art, like archery, but we just haven't been able to find, solve that one yet because of location. But otherwise, um.
So, so other than Delano, is the magic archery reaching out your cowl?
I have.
I was gonna say, you spoke with Cologne.
And you've gotten their feedback, if, if it's, uh, if the lessons learned, what they'd like to like, what the annual costs are, what they, what they have to, I mean.
Yeah, I have the data from them. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, they said it's pretty self-sustainable. Like, again, we, public works would have to do some chemical work, but.
I've talked to all the works crew over there and they, uh, it's pretty much around itself.
It does, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they have their ecosystem and everything. Someone, someone I'd really like to see. Talked to Andy in the last year about it, from these, from here is some of that future stuff, maybe just even a, a, a page that gets filled out of how much time in public works are they gonna need?
As they're gonna need, yep.
Money are we gonna need to maintain things? Cause we need to plan for, you know, they can do so much.
Right.
And if also now they're tied, you know, we gotta plan for staffing and plan for.
Absolutely.
It'd be nice to have some of those things actually documented that we could see. I know we talked about it, we're gonna try to create, I just haven't had time to do it, kinda, some of the, some of those items. You know, if it's a playground, we can do mulch every year, or you gotta do this.
Right.
A splash pad, how often does the pad have to get changed out? You know, are we looking, is it every ten years? We need to start saving for that. Those things, I think would be really helpful.
Absolutely.
And there's.
And a resource.
And a resource, yeah.
And we can.
They're pulling in so much. We're having a harder time with that, I mean.
And just to be transparent too, it's, it, I think maybe we could be doing a better job visualizing that to council and the commissions as well, cause on the staff side of things, you know, those larger capital projects, we do discuss with you, but those smaller maintenance like mulch and everything, that's something that we talk to, talk about more and plan for more internally. We don't always relay it, um, but we do add mulch every year. We do make sure that our parks are inspected and.
Inspections and, yeah, and doing all that would be nice to know, kind of, before we make the decision to do something, that I'd hate to, oh gosh, we didn't think, now we gotta do this every year, we didn't plan for that or things like that. Um, I think it'd be helpful.
I mean, and to be honest, I feel that the past councils have done a really good job financially with the city and it's put us in a really good lo- thing and we're really good at planning for these things that Mike's talking about. That doing a project like this and being able to cash flow it is a huge win. It's a huge win for the city. It's for the taxpayers. This money has already been given to us from the taxpayers. Um, earmarked and it, this has been in our, the CIP for years. And it's kinda cool to see it possibly moving on to that next step.
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think they, Delano charges.
They have, they have concessions, that's why.
No.
They have what?
They have concessions.
I don't think Cologne keeps track.
Yes.
They don't, because it's just open.
Delano's fenced off?
I believe that they're all required to have a fence.
Oh.
I believe that is part of a fence.
Uh, no, no. There's one up in Saint Cloud, I've been to it, it doesn't have.
I thought that, cause Cologne's has a fence around it, I believe. Yes.
If it's a pool, I think, but there's no way to drown in the splash pad.
Like George one in Saint Cloud, there's no fence, like a park.
No, there, there's just not, it's just a concrete pad.
Yeah, cause Chaska's has nothing.
Okay.
Well, I don't even know if you call it.
So we did all.
Things have changed.
Right.
Lots have changed.
Right, that's.
We did also talk.
Okay.
And their maintenance department, uh, they hate to think. Kyle'll spend more time there than he thinks, because when he goes down there and there's broken glass, you gotta get all the broken glass.
Right.
And then when kids go down there and make a mess that year unexpected, uh, you gotta clean that up before you open it. But, I mean, the community loves them. If you have smaller kids, ten years.
Yeah. But we have a, an ordinance already that says we can't have glass, so, but again.
There's gonna be rules and no glass, but believe me, he's gonna be down there and he's gonna find broken glass.
Well, I'm not, I didn't mean it like that. I just meant.
I mean, it'll be a point definitely that, uh, that you're gonna have to look at any personal staff because there's no way.
Well, I mean, I think that, again, that's part of the discussion too that we're having in general. Um, but.
I think if we come in at four fifty and then another two hundred, that's for six fifty, I'm gonna struggle with that.
Oh, I'd struggle. For the whole?
I, I think we'd all, to be honest, Mike, I think we'd all struggle with that. I don't, I don't foresee that that would be, that's, yeah. Yeah. And then, and then at that point, we gotta make our priorities, right? We gotta determine what's,
Right.
you know, and what is the cost, what is the, the cost driver? What is the portion that is, is gonna affect us and, and hurt us the most? So.
We did also talk last summer about doing both this year. But that would be financing for a portion of it. But then I think Maggie, you decided that we were going out.
I'm not gonna bond anything this year, so it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Well, just again, reassessing every year. It just was not what I.
Pavilion and a sprinkler. There you go. We got her doing it.
No, we need four. There's four heads in the splash pad, Larry.
Sometimes I feel, and again, nothing that you've done or anyone's done, but I just, as I look at these parks, I just, we're dumping too much into a, a space and not having an identity of, you know, we have an identity of this kind of our ball fields here and now we gotta, uh, uh, ice rink next to it and another, you know, and just kinda dumping things in versus kinda making it what it is.
Overall, and overall scheme, right?
And again, we're, I mean, we don't have a lot of other green spaces where we can do things. And that's where I struggle with.
A lot of that here is the parking, I think. Cause like West Ridge has some, but I don't think it's going to be enough parking for a splash pad use. Yeah.
Or maybe it's time to relook at them all. I, I would hesitate to take this ball field up here and take it out, put something else there too. I mean, do we need it? Is it, did it do what it served thirty years ago and now we're just going forward?
I think when you were working on the splash pad, that's where it was originally going to be, right?
Putting it over the ball field.
But I do know in the summer, that field gets used for T-ball, for community ed, the younger kids.
Could they go down?
Yeah, but that's where, uh, the like U-ten, U-11 teams are playing those two fields. Nobody uses the baseball ball field for, uh, like, community or.
So these teams that come in, do we, are we aware of them? Or do they just come in and use them?
Well, community ed.
Coordinate with Public Works and, and.
You have, you have a handle on how our fields get used, how often from a organization standpoint?
When they approach us, but some, they just come.
There's people who just.
They just use them, yeah.
So we, I mean, organizations, not just families going out and playing kickball, but organizations. So we do have a handle on that or?
Yeah, cause they coordinate with Kyle. They have a mode before games.
Well, at certain times.
Okay. So you know. That'd be interesting to see.
Well, there, there are some like, uh, media, I don't know if they've, they have talked about anything, but they've come and used it.
Yeah, I think like Mondays and Wednesdays, I don't.
But we may, we just not.
Yeah, but that one, that one they can't use for baseball. This one, this is.
This little one does get used, but I mean, that's the same time as the.
Cause it is right here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should change any of that kind of stuff. But we did a, when I was on park board, we like had pictures of all the parks. And we went and we put different amenities in different parks. And that's where we came up with, you know, the basketball court, you know, pavilions. And that's where we kinda got some of these things. And the coolness of it is we've actually executed quite a bit of them. And now then we started thinking outside the box and doing the dog park, archery. We just can't find a location that works for safety reasons.
And I think this park as far as, as like the hockey rink and the pavilion and, and some of that stuff is because it is the central hub of the town. Right? This is, this is the main corridor where, where I think we wanna bring more people to this park.
I think it's our community park and not just a neighborhood park too, right?
Right.
Well, as for Coldwater, that poor development has nothing.
They can walk.
Well, I'm just saying though, that's the closest park to them.
Yeah, whereas Discovery and, and, uh, Meadow and, and some of these other ones are more that community, that, that, that area park, so to speak, rather than this is more just the larger community. We want everybody to come here.
Yep, it's the hub.
West Ridge is a very nice park and it does get used a lot.
I've seen volleyball.
Oh, yes.
I still wanna see walking trails that meet up or go around the pond and go up to the other trail.
We've talked about that and that's something I'm.
Yeah, we talked about that, not that like.
So. Any more questions? Any more discussion? Do we have a good grasp on the direction we want ahead? Hmm, I mean, is council kinda giving us?
Well, I said where I'm at, so nobody else has really spoken it, except for mine.
Something to go ahead and get bids?
Where we stand, but I think it's for you guys to discuss it then and kinda make your plan together.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
Hope you know where I stand.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to do a little, I'd like to find out a few more things from a community standpoint. Pricing out. If you guys decided, hey, for five grand, let's get bid. But it comes back to get the decisions, we're gonna do it.
Then we need to, we, we make the decision to do it. Yeah, not be willy-nilly about it.
So.
They should get close. I mean, our engineers do that. They come with their numbers. These architects, they should be able to get us pretty close just by a rough estimate on things to give us an idea. Now is it, and our engineers tend to always go high, so the number always looks better, but.
So could we get a rough estimate for only restrooms?
Yeah, I can, I can, I think probably what would be best is getting a lot of information pulled together for your March meeting and then I guess assessing there how you wanna move forward.
Move forward.
And then make a recommendation to council, I guess. Or if you wanna make a recommendation to council to do the bids, or if you wanna wait. It's, I can pull more information and you can make that decision at the March meeting.
You'd have the cost for the final construction documents too at that time?
No, cause we would still, we would, it's kind of, um, I only have like rough estimates right now. Cause at the March meeting, it, it's kinda how we decide on how we wanna move forward. If you wanna.
No, she was saying the cost to develop, uh, to go out to bid. The, the cost to final.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To finalize the, the plans.
Yeah. If, if we decided to go out to bid, the cost for that and then a rough estimate for a bathroom.
Yeah, so I can get your bathroom and then, yeah, bid information. Is there anything else?
You wanna ask to see if his numbers still from last fall are valid?
Yeah.
I mean, as long as you're asking them for three bathrooms.
Check on the capacity limits for the one to, or the two to three bathroom.
Yep.
The code requirement.
I think that's good to check out.
Yep.
Because.
I think it'd be plenty, but.
If, if you could go down to two, I'm sure that's quite the savings. Not really, I guess, the plumbing's gonna be. So when you, they estimate a building, I mean, it goes by square foot. So the park board all, like Ted said, this is not exactly how big that we want it. I mean, if we shrunk it, I mean, four feet, six feet, I mean, you're looking at the floor, you're looking at the roof, you're looking at, you know, foundation. I mean, that's.
You wanna keep it a.
And if we lost, if we lost the kitchen and, and the overhang. And the overhang in the pavilion area too, I mean.
We can always add.
Look at the pavilion.
Twenty by twenty, I believe that one is. Yeah.
I mean, this, this building, it looked like it was sixty by thirty. I mean, is it, I mean, so what's the capacity for that, for this size building? Do they kinda have, they must have these numbers worked out?
I think it was, uh.
The architects must know that, right? Correct?
The twelve, yeah, twelve to sixteen picnic tables, eight foot picnic tables. So it's, it's a good size. It's good sized pavilion.
The pavilion area is twenty-six by thirty.
Is it on there? Okay.
Yeah.
Can you see that?
Very tiny, young eyes.
Right? Young eyes.
How about, have we reached out and we've talked splash pad, we've certainly been talking with people in Delano, how they know?
I've talked with, uh, a company, yes, not Delano's. Oh, the company from Delano, Flagship, yes.
Yeah, they came out, they gave us presentation.
So my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, that Del, that company donated a lot of the stuff in Delano. So they could kinda use that as their showroom.
Their showroom floor. Yep.
Let people come in and I'm sure at the top of the line, that we talked to them in all past, but they would like to try to do something a little smaller, more positive factor for smaller communities. And maybe set some things up in our community that they could have people, cause we're not too far from Delano and other, I mean, instead of these grandiose, big ones that the Minnetonka's can afford or in Praire's, what about a smaller site where they might wanna show off a couple pieces and have them out there for smaller communities? And I don't know, is that an option or is that just way out there, they won't do it?
I don't, I mean, we haven't specifically asked. I don't know what their answer is.
I mean, he came out and he gave us some, some recommendations and we looked at some products and we looked, you know, um, some coatings and that kinda thing.
But that was Flagship who sells on behalf of landscape structures and aquatics, right? Is there like?
Yeah, they have like a.
So I think you'd have to go directly to.
Landscape.
Mm-hmm.
And that's worth doing, right?
Yeah. Doesn't hurt to ask.
It doesn't, yeah. It definitely doesn't hurt to ask. So that's something that, yeah, maybe.
If they could donate a few pieces or something, you know, we could highlight it or add our time for this, they can put a sign up, a year old sign up and I think it's worth checking in too.
Um, I just have one question. Did you guys take out additions to like the skate park? Cause I don't see that in here. Did you?
The expansion of the skate park, yes. We, we have pushed that back, um, a couple of years. Any?
So we budgeted in twenty twenty-two for park board, right? Twenty-four, what was it, seventy-five thousand?
Fifty.
Fifty.
It was fifty? So is the plan to use that fifty for some of those other things or is it the?
Yeah, we're not gonna stop all projects.
Bath and we're kinda keeping this most money for this.
Yeah. There are other projects that we are looking at, at doing, um.
We talked about dog park fencing, which shouldn't be, which should be small.
Fencing does get expensive, absolutely. Um, you know.
Skate park gets used a lot too and I'd like to see that get finished up and invested into new equipment before that gets all beat up and weathered before we expand. But, I mean, I'll leave that to you guys, but.
Have they already moved the, the city fence? Chain link?
Public Works? Yeah.
I don't, me bringing up dog parks, I don't like the idea of a dog park in one of our parks out here either. We just don't think in West Ridge. I just don't think that's the right place. I think they should be off a little somewhere else. I'd still rather see something down at the compost site opened up for that and, and readjust all that fencing and all that stuff. I just think in a park with dogs run around and poop smell and, I don't know. It, that's just me and it just doesn't seem, it seems odd to me.
I think that's why we haven't done it is because trying to find a location.
And issues with the compost site, you know, um, as far as parking and stuff, to meet code, I mean, we have to asphalt. You know, we would have to. That was something that we had looked into. We can't just put down a gravel surface. Um, so it includes, you know, asphalt and then you have curb and gutter and then you have drainage issues and then you, you know, so, um, you know, other, you know, cause Meadow Park was another one we were. Right, right. So. I would, and, and it's, that's something that people have asked for is, is a dog area, free range dog area, you know, um.
Would you charge for that?
No. No, it would just be.
Uh, Hidden Creek, are, are, is the parking lot still talked about over there?
Yep. There again, that's, uh, you know. Another project where it's, it's curb and gutter and asphalt and.
But I think that would be nice for a dog park. But you'd be parking.
Discovery down there. Yeah.
Which one?
No Meadow.
No Meadow Park. I'm sorry, Meadow. Yep.
It is something that, I don't know, uh, that we, when we talk about kind of our larger street project for twenty twenty-three, like, can some of that, you know, parking lot? I don't know. We're already considering.
When we're doing another project, so that's the cost, maybe.
Like it has an alternative to see what it comes in at, but I don't know.
Nice slope there.
Yeah. You're talking a much larger parking lot. I mean.
You gotta, pretty much in Meadow, you gotta build a road.
Yep. Between two houses.
Right. And it's not necessarily curb and gutter, just, it, it would be, you know, based off of what engineers found as far as drainage, right, runoff, that sort of stuff. So.
Be a large project.
And what are some of the hot things? What are the fig, some of the bigger items right now that are parks and parking racks and the, the things that people like to do?
Pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah, we've, that was something that was brought up last, last meeting, actually. Pickleball was brought up. Um, if we can find a location for tennis court, we have considered, you know, like a, like a three, uh, basketball court, tennis court, pickleball court type thing, you know, um, there again, that wasn't something that never was on the radar so much before, but we have had, had a lot of input about pickleball especially. That would be a phenomenal idea, I think. I don't know much about the pickleball. So, I don't know.
And that would be seventy-five bucks and tape is pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Well, and, yeah, it, it's kinda one of those things that we've tried to do partnerships with community ed in the past. But I think, I think I was talking with Mike a little bit about maybe we need to try and start some of our own recreation items, maybe. Um, because they were trying to do pickleball league with the school district, uh, community ed, but they just weren't getting enough people, um, using our, signing up and we were kind of renting out the space and it wasn't getting used. So, um.
I don't know. Kyle?
I don't know. I do know there is a rec team that does use the soccer field.
Oh, there is. Fantastic.
Yeah, I do know there is some group and I do know that one of my neighbors will do pickup games. And he's very impressed with the field.
How about lacrosse? Is there, is it worth getting some lacrosse nets up next to him too? So you.
Are they different? Maybe different size?
Smaller size.
Smaller size? It's pretty big.
I know the archery thing is still questioned once in a while. Um.
Why couldn't you find space in West Ridge?
Per archery?
I think it has to do with backdrops and safety.
I wouldn't like to.
Residents, residents that are, yeah, residents that are like.
You have to shoot at Chance House. But you could go the other direction.
And you're more like, wasn't me.
Three more dogs were killed in West Ridge Park today.
I, I'd like to see the skate park reviewed again. I'm just sad it was, it's off the list.
I think the reason it was off the list is cause we pushed a lot, like we were trying to focus on the, possibly on more specifically the pavilion this year, if we did move forward kinda cost-wise, but.
And then the splash pad, we'd probably have to save, you know, if we keep getting fifty thousand a year versus I think we're asking for a hundred when we start out, right?
Yeah.
Um, that'll just push the splash pad out more, which then pushes every other project out more.
From a staff, um, so the kind of, same back here listening to everybody where some money is always the final stage, you know, and everything. But I say, me and Maggie go back to the architect and be like, what can we do for three hundred fifty thousand? You know, use this engineer estimate, still have that hundred fifty thousand tucked away. Or the splash pad that possibly happen next year and everything. Kinda keep these projects rolling along for the, you know, eight years at least.
Or the splash pad that possibly happen next year and everything, and kinda get these projects broken along, there's a, you know, eight years at least, we've been talking about it, I've been here. Um, so if we did something like that, maybe small, sure, up the size, maybe came with the fact of the park or decent land, that might work for everything.
No, no.
As long as we get a general concept of, I think, what.
Design has been very flexible, um, and, and, you know, like, like May, to Maggie's point, we have looked at, you know, Ryan did some research and, and had come up with a concept for the existing building. Well, then finding out to bring it to code and stuff, we couldn't do that, so we're, we're not diehard set on this exact design. The reason we're pushing, or, and I shouldn't say pushing, working with this design, is because we have had drafted plans on this. It is paid for in that respect, um, a- and I think that that's just where we've gone, right? We, we've, we've worked on this in the past, we've, we've put this together and, and, like I say, not necessarily, not necessarily wanting to start from scratch.
Well, I think another piece of the discussion was, is why we wanted to have this meeting too, is we didn't wanna start making significant changes to this plan if, you know, we wanna council input, because it costs money to change.
And if council had, had another plan for, you know, another idea that they, their, their concept was different than ours, we, we wanna, kinda wanted to know that. We wanted to know what direction.
We don't want someone, uh, uh, a commission working on something for a year and a half, right, and completely get shot down and.
Right.
It's discouraging and it sucks and we gotta have these talks and open communication.
Absolutely.
If not, once a year, every six months, maybe, um, you know, I, I think you're beneficial. I would, you know, to Kyle's point, maybe on some of that with the pavilion, maybe downsizing it is, I, what are we trying to accomplish with it? You know, if you're talking twelve tables and eight people sit, that's ninety-six, that's a hundred people. Does it, do you really think we're gonna get a hundred, is it gonna be more than fifty, should, you know, are, are we thinking too large? And if we can't satisfy every person, but what's the majority of people?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if there's a hundred, we've all been to enough things where half the people are out at the, uh, playing kickball on the fields and the other half are over doing this, and not everyone's in there at one time.
Right.
Unless it's raining, but then, like, it, so, so it's some of, what's the intent, what, what are we trying to do, what, what's the size of it? Maybe downsizing it is.
And the downsizing's fine too, but I, I just wanna always leave that option to add on.
Be able to expand and.
Right.
In the future, we may have a whole new green space somewhere and a whole different, a whole different thing in twenty years.
Right, true, absolutely.
A whole different area versus this one.
Versus this, yeah.
I'm hoping that's more the case than expanding one here.
And then how serious are you trying to, think you're gonna woo over the baseball teams to come back into town too?
I'd love to do it, I don't think they will.
Okay, I don't, I don't know how willing they would be or not, so.
No, I think they still wanna grandstand, but bathrooms might be enough to get them to start, you know, but.
You know, is it one of those, you, you build it and they will come back or not? You know?
Wasn't lighting a big part of it?
Lighting's a big part.
Lighting, grandstand.
Are they playing in Watertown now, or?
No. Oh, we play in Maryland.
Oh, I see.
They play in Maryland.
Maryland is putting up lights this year, so.
Are they? Oh, that we won't, they won't.
So.
I mean, I like Kyle's idea of just kinda saying like, can, if, if, if the goal is just the bathrooms, do you do that and then you can get bathrooms and a splash pad and still do more of your projects?
Or, or go to the architect and ask what he, what he feasibly sees for.
Always add the pavilion later.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we could do the splash pad and the bathrooms in one year, yeah, that'd be great.
I certainly think that serves our community better than.
Cuz it'll be at like just over five fifty this year.
Those shelters weren't that expensive, did we? You could still put a little something up there to have.
I think it was like twenty.
You could put a couple of them up, one a year or whatever, see how.
That one down there was thirty with concrete.
Was it thirty?
With concrete.
Green space in between, so you'd have your own.
Yeah, it was thirty with concrete, which isn't, it still is not.
The barbecue thing. A couple of those might be matters, something like that might be.
It's very possible, yeah.
I think, I think that makes sense, Kyle, I think maybe since we're, we've both, I'm glad we're both here, we can kinda go back, process it together, um, and maybe relay it to the architect and just put, well, first put up, kinda some ideas together and then bring it back and.
Right, speak with the architect.
Area, I'd be like, all right, that's, we're best, we would go up there, you know, how?
Yeah, we could just have a family.
There's a building in the way.
Could have a family.
There's a building in the way.
See how this looks or how it fits or what we think.
There's a building in the way.
I thought the splash pad was going to be more than one fifty to two hundred.
I thought that we got a quote for one fifty and we were disappointed with what that looked like.
Yeah, it was like one bucket dump and.
It was just kinda the basic design, but, yeah, there's a lot that we have to s- to look at still with that, so.
Don't we have old fire hose laying around, can't we just?
I like Larry's idea, sprinkler.
We'll just buy, we'll just sprinkle and they can stand there.
Ryan, Ryan, Ryan.
I think if you guys, if you started with the number of three fifty with the architect, or if you stay with the pavilion, that would be first. That would be the logical thing, would have the restrooms and the overhang for people to go, because if you do go to a splash pad, if you have been to a splash pad that is not a charged, fenced in area, you'll see the kids running around, what are the moms doing? Where they at?
They're all sitting in the shade.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so you're gonna have to have a shade for the moms, how much does that cost? The city's gonna have to get another staff person, how much does that cost? Well, we get a pavilion, that's phase one, what's phase two? Add a splash pad when we have the money, well, how much is a pavilion, we don't know that yet, let's find out how much that is and then proceed. But I think we should do that sooner than later, I liked the pavilion idea, I like it for a place to rent, I like it for a place for the community to gather. I like the bathrooms, um, back in the history of mayor, if you've seen any of the old books, man, it was the place to be.
It was.
Maybe it will be again, I don't know.
Right.
Maybe it'll, maybe it'll bring Mike's baseball teams back, who knows?
You know.
And I, I agree with that, but what I was hearing, the bathrooms were really being roped by the splash pad, so if the splash pad never happens, why have the bathrooms?
Mm-hmm, and I think having a splash pad would make mayor the place to be, I mean, Waconia doesn't have a splash pad, Watertown doesn't have one, so.
Right, we'd be the next.
Twenty's got a pool.
The indoor.
A zero depth pool.
Yeah, inside that you pay for.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
And I, I, I don't disagree with the splash pad, but the, this, this, the city will, will have to get another staff person.
But I think that's our.
Unless you get a one feature thing.
We're already, Larry, we're already there though.
Yeah, but we haven't even talked about that yet, I mean, we're, we're.
Right.
Come out a pavilion, but.
Well, they've been talking about the splash pad for some time.
And you've done this for eight years.
Um, at least eight years, I mean, it's been.
Yeah, I'd like to see if, I'd like to.
Yeah, it's something that we've talked about for a long time, I know it's been something that's been passed.
If Maggie comes back with all that stuff in March, we can come up with a more comprehensive plan, present it to council, see what they think, send it to bid if.
I like the idea.
Do we send it to bid first, right?
Well, no, I, I think we will.
No, we gotta, we have some more numbers we wanna hear.
I think, I think it's kinda bringing the information back to you guys in March and then you guys decide how to move forward.
Whether we, whether we present it to council or we.
Right, cuz we had a few more questions we want answered.
You can decide if you, you know, and we'll bring our information about scaling back too, so we'll just kinda throw a bunch at you and then we can.
Put around a three hour meeting schedule.
Figure out how to move forward.
Out of those things, is it, you'll be presenting to the council, or is Park Board gonna be at that meeting, or will the chair be there to kinda talk through it, or?
Uh, at the council meeting?
Yeah.
Well, usually it's me and the, the council liaison that'll kind of talk through it, but, but Park Board is always willing, I mean, always invited to be there too.
It would be kind of a good idea if Park Board members came to the meeting.
We had a joint paper.
At least to be able to provide that conversation.
Somewhat, but, yeah, somewhat, I was thinking where the chair would be good, I think. I try not to get into too much at council, having too much of that back and forth.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, work session for sure, but then we can't make a decision.
Right.
Um, so maybe it makes sense to do that if people wanted to, but maybe if the chair was at least in the audience, we could ask other questions too.
Absolutely.
Well, you, I, I think that they'll be able to speak to that, but I would encourage other co- other board members to attend, and if they have, they have a right to say something if they want to. Um, yeah, I don't know, I feel like we've just gone back and forth for years and years and years and there's never, it's never gonna be a hundred percent exactly what, i- i- it, we're gonna have different ideas all, all the time, I think if we just tabled this, we'd come back and it'd be the same conversation and I think we've got a very large amount of money sitting there waiting to be used on projects. So you either do this pavilion or you do pretty much every other, all the other projects all this year, and then you start saving for that big one, or do you do that big one that we think is gonna be a focal point for the city? And then be able to, you know, I know that we've really cut back on the Park Board money, um, in budgeting, uh, just because we've had other projects going on and knowing that you guys have a healthy fund, um, there's one reason.
Spend it so we can get some more.
Kind of not really like.
But then we, it used to be.
I think it adjusts, it would adjust to be like, okay, we've got some other bigger projects that, you know, maybe you don't pull as much from the Park Board as we did previous years and we're able to then fund those projects a little bit sooner. Um, like I said, I think the councils that, um, have come to this have really done a really good job at making sure we don't, we try not to have big surprises and we've really, we're ahead, I mean, you look at other communities that don't think ahead like we have and, I mean, I think Watertown is looking at a water tower as like sixteen million. Yeah.
How about other community events, have you guys talked about community stuff?
We did at the last.
Yep, yep, that was a big thing that we've.
Sixty-five K at one point and, you know, maybe partner up with, uh.
We talked about a band in the park or something, or music in the park.
Music in the park, um.
At Rising Community or any other time too, for that matter?
Open, open gym sessions like Saturdays, uh.
And I thought it was great that you guys were at the, where we're at, Mayor Rising Community Festival, I'd like to see a little more signage, you know.
We've had that discussion.
Yeah, we.
I think that was great, just there, I, I think it was good.
Yeah, I think it's time to pull the residents again too, I think that's been, that would be my recommendation, is, right, I know.
Things like that, where we can go about and ask them, you know, if they're around, then we can ask them versus someone filling something out or a survey monkey and actually doing it.
Right.
Maybe if we, you know, people just stop by them, just start asking them.
Yeah.
What would you like to see?
Mm-hmm.
Quick fill this out, if people do it then.
And the people I've spoken to about the splash pad and pavilion seem positive and, and excited about it, or the possibility of it, the idea.
I think more the splash pad, or me, not so much, yeah.
Well, cuz we used to have.
I'm the same.
We used to have a big pavilion in the middle of town.
We did, it was huge.
It was enormous.
Yes.
I mean.
Right next to the water tower. I mean, it was.
And how much did it get used?
A lot. That was, but there again, that was the central focal point, point of the town.
Those were different times.
Yeah, they were different times, but that was the central focal point.
Largest parade too?
Yep.
Sorry.
Um, Maggie, can you also get updated like estimate maybe from, um, flagship for a, like entry level splash pad, is that easy enough?
Yeah, I think I could get an idea of, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good, all right.
Any other discussion? Martini? Yeah, he did. Yep. No, it was not. So that would be something we'd have to tie in, cuz sewer and everything would have to be tied in differently. But to your point, I think we could do sewer outside, um, relatively cheaper, depending on which. You need to drain.
Circulation, but yeah, I think it eventually.
You need to drain.
You have to drain it. It's recirculating, but, but it, you lose some at some point.
Doesn't it travel to the, and then back to, isn't it, is there a distance?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was pretty cool, the concept.
Oh, yeah.
Looking at it, especially for a water guy.
I think you'd have to drain it at the end of the season.
Yeah.
So there should be some sort of drainage.
He gets excited about these things.
I'm right with him, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, oh, man.
They built a Zamboni.
Okay. I think we have a good direction, I wanna thank the council for coming and talking with us, um, giving your, us your input and, uh, direction so that we, we have a good path going forward, um. Yeah, I think.
No, this is it.
This is, this is, this is our meeting tonight. No! We want you here all the time. So, uh, with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries? Meeting adjourned.
I know, it feels weird for me having the council or the mayor sitting here and I feel like they're not supposed to be standing there, I am supposed to.
Which one are you?
Oh, goodness.